All right, welcome everybody to this planning board meeting Wednesday, December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. First item on our agenda is roll call. Tonight, it looks like we have a full house. We got Lisa Buck, Rob, Bob Bear, Robert. It's so formal. We've got John Beckett, we've got myself, Phil Ruck, we've got John McIntosh, we've got Ashley Case, Christian Switzer, Mike Costello. Nobody's online, we're good. All right, next up, acceptance of the agenda.
So moved.
Very good, second.
Wait, who was that? Y'all, we were like speaking in unison. All right, I'm giving you first, I'm giving you.
Whenever. Yep, we had moved. Did we get the second?
Yeah, John's.
John can have this.
Any comments, changes? Hearing none, we can do hand vote.
Yeah, we can just make sure hold them up for Zach so I can count.
All those in favor?
Are you voting for?
My voting?
The agenda, are you voting to approve the agenda?
Okay.
Again. Eight, that's eight approved, eight approved and then opposed.
Very good. Thank you. Next up, approval of the minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Very good, second. You have a second. Any edits, comments, revisions?
Just have a couple of small corrections. Well, at the bottom, last paragraph on the first page, first line, Isabel pointed out that Jessica had forgotten to mention the postcards sent to immediate abutters, sent instead of set to.
Oh, thank you.
And then on page two, sort of in the middle. It starts, an issue was raised, and we go down to the third line, at the very end. It says, once the findings are finalized, the board in the.
Did I get it today?
By the board in the relevant, relative meaning.
Ah, thank you. Sometimes my fingers go.
That it?
That's it.
All right, any other comments?
None, it's overall.
Thank you. Great job as always, Jessica. All right, so all those in favor of the minutes as amended?
Abstained.
Yeah.
That's seven for approval with one abstaining.
Very good. Next up, new business. We have one public hearing this evening. It is a site plan review application by the University of Maine. Authorized agent of WBRC located at Six Tonk Road, a portion of tax map eleven lot seventy-seven, tax map eleven dash two. Lot seventy-seven in the university zoning's zoning district. The application proposes approximately twenty-six thousand square feet of renovations and nineteen thousand square feet of new additions and enhanced exterior amenities. On a two point four three acre portion of the University of Maine campus at the Alphon Arena and Sean Walsh Hockey Center. I believe we have a representative applicant, if you step up and just introduce yourself. I want to, to say you know, last time, since the last time I saw you here, we changed our process a little bit. We're leaning on our, our new contract planner. So I, and I was thinking about this, trying to remember what we did a whole month ago or whenever it was, that you're going to provide the summary, Toby will fill in the blanks. Is that how we left it?
Yes.
All right, good. All right, so.
I am Toby Mitchell with WBRC here on behalf of the University of Maine.
We have a seat for you over there if you'd like, so you're on camera.
Oh, I have to be on camera?
Yep.
Well, hopefully, there we go. Um, I just have a brief presentation. I think you already sort of gave a lot of the summary. The applicant here is of course the University of Maine. They're being represented by WBRC. This is a major site plan review and it's located within the university zoning district. As the board is aware, something is within five hundred feet of college Ave or some of the property lines, it comes before you for review. So not typical for every university project, but this one is. The subject parcel that we're discussing is a two point four-ish acre portion of the campus. It's tax map eleven lot seventy-seven, and this is the location. Uh, this is just an overview of the site plan. I think this really shows sort of what's going on here. In the red is the proposed additions area. And then there's a variety of sort of site improvements that I will get into the details of. Um, we talked about sort of discussing highlights, or I guess I called them here, unique issues. One of these is lighting. So there's new site lighting proposed within the parking lot. This is intended to match the existing UMaine campus light poles that are already existing in other lots. There's also, you should be aware of special building lighting proposed on the roof. This is for things like game days and special events. Um, the relevant ordinance standard here regulates those that produce more than eighteen hundred lumens at their initial output. And the standard is that they all need to be shielded or downcast. All of the relevant lighting fixtures, as were provided by the applicant in the cut sheets, meet that standard. And we do have renderings if you're interested in seeing them of the lighting on the roof. Uh, in terms of trees and natural resources, of course, the proposal is already within a existing developed area. They're really amending the existing development. So there are no wetlands or other significant natural areas within that project area. Uh, there's an existing grass area between the building and college Ave. That's essentially going to be undisturbed except for utility and water pipe upgrades. Once those are completed, they, that area will be re-logged, reseeded. Um, I know that you like to hear about trees. There are eleven trees adjacent to Long Road within the campus that are proposed for removal. And nine new trees and shrubs are, and or shrubs are proposed in that place. Uh, there's also seven trees within the project site that are designated for protection. And I didn't have to suggest a condition here because they already noted on the plan set that tree protection in the form of staping or a drip line fence will be provided. Um, and then in terms of traffic access and parking, generally vehicular access will be remaining the same. It currently occurs from College Avenue or from other private roads that are internal to the campus. Um, what is changing here is really enhancements to the designated drop-off area. As you saw in the site plan, there are new pavers, striping, and some additional pedestrian amenities. Uh, the parking and the maneuver layouts were reviewed by the Orno Fire Department, and they have signed off on them. You know, the improvements will continue to allow for the movement of the larger team buses, but also fire department emergency vehicles. Uh, in general, you should be aware that the proposal will not increase the overall occupancy of the building. So no increase in vehicular traffic is anticipated as a result of this application. The current condition is a, of the parking lot is a one hundred and fifty-one space parking lot. They are proposing to reduce the parking by fifty spaces in that parking lot in order to sort of accommodate the new drop-off area and the pedestrian amenities and landscaping improvements. Um, and, but there is a sort of a satellite parking lot. That's how it's depicted on the plans, adjacent to this. The university, as I understand it, did some pretty extensive research about the demand for that satellite lot, and they have found that that lot can accommodate the fifty spaces that are proposed to be lost from the lot at the Alphon in that satellite lot during, you know, peak in school demand. It's a commuter lot. Um, in terms of drainage and stormwater, essentially, this is a redevelopment project. So the overall impervious area on site will be about the same from free to post-development with the addition of, of quality. Um, quality treatment. The town's engineering peer reviewer did review this. No concerns were raised. Um, and the direction of existing flow on site will remain relatively unchanged. They are proposing some new catchways and stormwater pipes to replace the existing ones due to how it's worded in the application is slight low-point adjustments and actually replacing a rerouting rather, an existing pipe from, uh, to go around the Sean Walsh Hockey Center. The proposal also includes the installation of underdrained filter drip strips at the western corners of the building, sort of adjacent to College Avenue. And I did put in our sort of standard suggested condition number four, which just reaffirms the requirement around erosion and sediment control. Um, and then finally, water and sewer not really proposed to change. It's currently served by public water and sewer. The applicants did provide it within the application materials capacity to serve letters from both the Orno VZ Water District and the, uh, the town.
WPC.
Yeah, thank you. The Water Pollution Control Facility. Um, and also you should just be aware, I added suggested condition number six. The applicants actually have already indicated that they're willing to comply with this, but the Fire Department has requested that the proposed additions have a similar fire suppression system to what's already within the building. Uh, and that will be submitted to the Fire Department for review and approval. Um, in this case, no formal waivers are necessary. I did document that a number of submission requirements are, are really not applicable in this case, just because of the scope of the project. And then in terms of conditions of approval, if you would see fit to approve this project, I suggested a number of our sort of standard conditions, as I think I described them last time. And then the one unique condition is the one that I mentioned around the fire suppression system for the additions, just to be submitted to the Fire Department for review and approval prior to building permit issuance. Um, that's all I have from you. The applicant is here to answer any questions, of course, and, um, yeah.
What we get going, I forgot to mention, just for transparency, University of Maine is a client of my, my company and do environmental work for them. I know nothing about this project and I have the issue reviewing it. Biased approach. Do you have any issues with that? Okay, very good. If you like, get that.
Yeah, they're in the small conference room.
Uh, so good. That, that said, do you have anything to add to?
Yeah, that was awesome. That was very detailed, very excellent. And just, just so that the, the board is aware. Um, the project does require an amendment to the slow to permit for the university. So a lot of the stormwater erosion control is also being reviewed by state in that aspect. Um, and as far as utilities, traffic, we're not changing the use or, you know, we're not adding seats. We're not changing what's there except to make it better, making the existing locker rooms larger. Um, making things more updated, improving the entrance for the spectators that, that come to the game. Um, I, if any of you have been to a game, you know, you're not going to park right up close to the Alphon. You're going to end up parking, walking down. So now we've made a larger plaza that, that just welcomes people into, into the game. Um, the fifty parking spaces that are being, being relocated and used in the satellite lot right adjacent to it. Um, the university does daily traffic counts across their campus, and they found on average there were hundred and sixty-four spaces in that satellite lot that weren't used on a daily basis. So I can definitely easily accommodate those fifty spaces for the primary use of it being a university for students coming. So it's not really going to impact them. Um, what we were told by the university is other than the handicap spaces, which we're still keeping, that those parking spaces don't get used. So now we're making a more defined drop-off area, a welcoming area to the, to the students and spectators. So.
So questions from board before we open up the public hearing? He had mentioned, or Toby had mentioned the, the slow to permit, and if you recall when we approved or reviewed the, the hotels on campus? I asked the same question then, and I'm not sure whether it's necessary for a condition of approval, but it do you recall, I'm just trying to think of how we did this for the hotels, if we requested a copy of this approved slow to amendment for the town? I'm just trying to remember how we, because I brought it up. And we, I don't know that we can ask that or if that's part of this, but basically with any other project, if it wasn't the university, if you have a slow to permit, that would be one of the items that the town would receive. So I just.
It, it is a public document.
Yeah.
So anyone could go in and see it. So we don't have an issue with providing it to a copy of the, to the, of the permit to the town.
Just to make sure, because you're telling us, and we have our town engineer telling us that the stormwater system is fine.
Yep.
Not really much change in impervious cover, but I just, you know, that, that permit would basically have DP sign off on that.
Correct. And, and I don't mind, it, like I said, it's a public document. Anyone can see it. Anyone can go see the application. I think there's actually a copy of it here at town office, at least there should be.
Yep.
Um, and so, yeah, I, I don't have an issue, and I'm sure the university doesn't have an issue with providing a copy of the signed permit when.
Yeah, basically, it's just that confirmation that, that you know what you need to do. That ring a bell to people. I think that's how we approached.
Do you remember what month that was? I can pull up the minutes. It was last year.
Around.
It was like two years ago.
Yeah, a couple of years.
Two years ago, yeah.
That's a pretty standard condition. I would suggest something like, you know, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall furnish a copy of the proof.
For any other project, you know, if it wasn't the university, that would be, that's that. Okay, so add that to the conditions. Uh, any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So you say hundred and sixty-four, you know, where they say hundred and sixty-four average daily empty parking spaces. So that includes any day in three hundred and sixty-five day here, right?
Correct.
So in summer, it's empty. I guess I don't believe that number. Oh, I don't, I don't believe that number when, you know, there's a game and the school's in session. And so what I'd like to know is the number of average daily, you know, empty parking spaces when you're going to have an event, which you probably don't have or.
You don't have events when there is, you know, during the day when they're schooled. The, the events for football games are on the weekend. Um, the events for hockey are in the evening. If they're during the day, they're on the weekend.
Right, but that's not just a commuter lot, like people park in there all the time. Like, I don't know, when I went to school there, I parked there and walked to school and then walked back down. Maybe you can't do that anymore. But you're saying that it's only commuter lot, so like eight to five, it's only time it's ever used?
It's a primarily a decal commuter lot during the.
So eight to five or whatever it is, eight to seven or something.
Uh, I don't know the exact hours, but yes.
Okay. Could be then.
And the, the trap, the parking counts that they did was while school was in session.
It was while school was in sessions. Okay. All right. That's great to know. Good.
And there, there's sixty-eight hundred parking spaces on campus that they're always adding, changing. Um, and you know, the locations of them. So that does not surprise me that they have to do parking counts to make sure that they are able to adjust to the number of commuters that, that are going to school.
Got it. It is crowded up there. So I'm not opposed to the fifty spaces going away, but, yep, okay, I'm good.
Question on lighting. So you had mentioned during your presentation about the addition of the lighting on the building. And if I remember reading your summary, you didn't say that in the presentation, but they go off when there's no events, correct? That is just event.
Right, the lighting on the roof?
Yes.
Um, there, there is going to be lighting on the roof, but it's just for prior to games, um, you know, graduations, things like that, just to just enhance it and make the experience for everyone that's going to Alphon that much better. But yeah, it's, it is not on all the time.
As we start talking about lighting a bit more, they're downward facing lights are going to match the existing lights, which is fine, but we don't. I mean, if you guys actually stepped outside the past couple evenings and actually can see some stars when there's no lights in Orno, it's, it's pretty impressive. So uh, having additional lighting going upward is probably not the best idea, but if it's limited.
Yep, it's very limited and all the other lighting that is in the parking lot. Um, if any of you have been between the football stadium and Alphon, it's quite dark back there. So we are adding some lights there for pedestrian safety. But, but other than that, the only other lighting are, is the, they're called glow lights on top of the roof. So.
I just quickly, I was looking at the traffic circulation, Toby, and, you know, the drop-off area. I, I'm just curious. So you don't really have, well, it's not really easy for you to go in, but in the turnaround section, it just shows traffic in, traffic out, but then it appears to switch to one way around that.
On the, on the, uh, the Sean Walsh Hockey Center side, yes.
So I was just looking at, at the, the arrow going in the opposite direction. I think that's just picking up some people leaving the revised parking area.
Right.
So it just, I was just making sure because it looked weird because they have the out arrow, but the only one way I would just make sure.
Typically during the to, yeah, so you're referring to the, to the
Yep.
down arrow that is.
Precisely.
Um, yes, that is what that is for.
Yeah, it picks up cars coming out.
But during, well, if I can backtrack, the university has let us know that primary direction of traffic is between the football stadium and that first aisle of cars. That's where most people travel.
Yep.
Um, if they, if they come from Branch Road or Ram. Now during special events like football games, hockey games, they gate that off. They typically have soft horses there. Um, and they do have some premium parking that's on this side with the handicap spaces. So it's a much, much more restricted area during, during events.
Okay. Other questions? All right, I'm not sure if the live streaming is set up yet, but we're just going to keep moving on.
We have no hands raised.
Okay, good. Before you ask, so public hearing is open, no hands raised. Dan, do you want to?
Hold on. I was going to ask where we're going to reserve spaces for Orno residents at the arena, but we do. Tell Stuart Harvey I'm asking for them, but.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Thank you very much. Great presentation.
All right, Mitch just said there is one hand raised. So Mitch, if you could elevate them or let them speak, work your magic.
Um, Payson Welch, you should be able to speak now if you are.
You're up, Payson.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hey, I, I just joined. Uh, I did want to ask a couple of questions. I would be there in person. I actually had some foot surgery today, so I'm just kind of catching up here. So I just wanted to let you know that I am here. I'd like to ask a couple of questions if anybody else wants to, to go um, ahead of me. That's, uh, that would be, that would be great or we're fine. If there's nobody else, I can, I can jump into it.
There's no one else.
You're, you're up.
Okay, all right. Can you guys get, just give me three seconds here?
Yes.
To catch up, okay, or to open up some documents. I have the, uh, the, um, I have the documents here. I just, um, want to review them. So, uh, my name is Payson Welch. I think some of you are probably familiar with, with me at this point. And I'm the president of the Orno Residential Community Association. So that, or that's ORCA for short. And, uh, the purpose of this org, that organization, it's a five oh one C three nonprofit, and it's really just to make sure to, uh, it was formed as, um, uh, to, to help the system butters related to planning board decisions. So it's, uh, working in the, uh, public interest for Orno residents. And, and really, I just wanted to, uh, make sure that, you know, the applications, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, uh, for major, major projects. So, so that's, that's kind of what I'm doing today. So I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about that. And okay, I'm just opening the binder now. So, um, we've got, uh, like, like I said, I apologize that I was late. Um, so we have the application from WBRC and you mean, so I assume that, that they're all here. For, for, for those questions. So I'm going to just go through and look at the, uh, items not included. This is a major project. So, uh.
You have specific questions, Payson. We're, we're talking about a lot of generalities. You have specific questions for us.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the list of included items here. So we've got, there are some information that was not included. Uh, so for instance, it was N A. Oh wait, that's N A. Um.
What was not included?
Yeah, you know, if you just give me a minute here, Phil, like I mentioned, I had surgery today, so I was anesthetized and, um, um, you know, just catching up. So if you, if you can give me a second here. So one of the things that, that was not included was an estimate of the daily traffic to be generated by the project. So I just wanted to follow up. That's marked as N A on the binder. So I just wanted to find out why that wasn't included, since that's, that was one of the requirements for a major project.
That you, you probably missed the presentation from our town planner at the start of this, but she indicated and then basically this project has been reviewed by staff and our town attorney, but they, they indicated that because the square footage, the area for the proposed revisions, it's, it's not increasing capacity. So they've contended that there will be no increase in traffic because there's no increased occupancy. So that's essentially a moot issue. So we did not and staff agreed with that. So that is why that is N A.
Okay, so, uh, there is a reduction in parking spaces though, so we're losing fifty spaces, right? And would not increase the amount of trips to the facility?
Not necessarily. Toby, I'm going to throw that one at you.
No. Um, the fifty spaces that are going to be lost are, will normally be used during the day by students. And those will be shifted to the satellite lot, um, just to the north of Alphon. Uh, that, um, the university does daily traffic counts, parking counts within the university. Um, and so they have stated that they have a hundred and sixty-four additional spaces that are empty in that lot, so they can take the additional fifty. Um, but as far as the fifty spaces being lost for special events, uh, if you go to a hockey game or a football game, you typically don't park in that area anyway. Um, usually you, you park further away and walk to the facility, like at the steam plant up at the Janus lot. Um, so the fifty spaces, they, they will be lost with this project, but they're going to shift them over to the satellite lot, which has um, already extra capacity in that lot for the spaces.
Uh, okay, so and, and I saw that there was a study done between, I believe it was September sixth and October sixth to study that. Uh, so there's the satellite lot, we're losing fifty spaces, and then it was anticipated the overflow will go there. Uh, the, the information I, that, that's, I, I, I think that's good information, but um, there's no information on when the university was measuring those times. So you know what? I think that have a more meaningful study there, uh, would have been done during actual events. Uh, if you, if you look at the capacity, there's fifty-four hundred seats and, uh, you know, if we, if you average, not everybody's going to commute, but you know, that's up to a thousand cars. So we've got around two hundred parking spaces currently, and then you take away fifty. Uh, you know, those, those parking spaces are probably already being used. So I guess what I'm getting at is that uh, I think that was a good study, but if you take an average of any random time, uh, and you say, okay, we've got a hundred and sixty-four spaces. Uh, then you know, that's, that's kind of curve fitting into that model. But, uh, if you were to do a study during, um, a, an, an actual event, that would have more meaningful information to tell us how many spaces are actually available. And, um, so, so, you know, I'm just, uh, again, just throwing that out there. Just want to kind of get that into the public record. I think that probably a traffic analysis should have been done for this. Uh, if there's any, um, one single event or thing that causes traffic issues here, especially along College Ave, it's sporting events. So, um, and, um, there, there is an exception in the, um, code for this as far as for university uh, zones, but that exception does not apply if there's adverse traffic conditions. Uh, zones, but that exception does not apply if there's adverse traffic conditions. And that's defined as, uh, a hundred or more peak, uh, trips during peak hours. I believe that was section eighteen one seventy seven. Uh, and in this case, because you're losing fifty spots, you, somebody could argue that. That's gonna cause an extra hundred, uh, trips during peak hours. So that was for the, um, planning board, uh, consideration criteria. And, uh, part of that criteria is that if that applies, you have to consider. Uh, any major intersection within one mile, and so that would be. Probably the Stillwater College Ave intersection. So, uh, the, it, that's just kind of my read on that. And, uh, you know, kind of ju- I, I think, um. You know, I, I don't really have anything else to comment on, except that that kind of stood out to me. And I understand there was, uh, uh, an argument, the, uh, or not an argument, but there was a lot of mention about how the capacity is not increasing. But if you have two variables, you say, okay, we've got the capacity for people, capacity for cars. And if they didn't change, like if we didn't lose parking spots, I think that would be the same, but. If we're losing parking spots and we're encouraging drop off with the, um. Uh, with the new, with the new plan there, I think that's gonna change the traffic. And like I said, you know. Reduction of spots is probably gonna cause more trips.
Toby, do you have anything to add to what you've already presented?
Well, the number of trips are based on the, the use of, of what's there. Um, the total number of spectators, participants, um, in the special events, it's not gonna change based on this new layout. So the number of trips will remain the same. Um, and they're, they're gonna be going to different locations. You're not gonna have an additional fifty cars. Right in that spot for events. They're gonna go up long road and go park further. Um, further west of the, of the, um, Alphon.
What, was there, uh, previous traffic studied for, uh, event traffic?
Uh, I, I don't know.
You said counts were done during.
During.
When, when schools in session.
Um, which, uh, it's, it's university, so the primary use of it is a school. Um, so the counts were done when students were there, um, to make sure that there was enough adequate parking for students. Um, and I, I hundred percent agree that when a hockey game is going on, a football game is going on. There is not enough parking right there. Um, and that is a, a fact that unless there's a parking garage or, or something to that effect, you're not gonna fit. Um, I believe, I believe Payson, you said a thousand cars. You're not gonna fit a thousand cars right in that little area. They're gonna have to be spread out across the campus.
Yeah, it, it. I was just saying, if you look at the capacity, that's, uh, five thousand four hundred, uh, seats. And if you average, uh, you know, let's say everybody drove there and, which is, you know, we're, you're gonna have some students walking there. But if you have everybody drive there, that's, uh, if you average like five person per, uh, five people per vehicle, that's gonna be one thousand eighty vehicles. So, you know, two, two hundreds, uh, roughly two hundred spaces, um, are, are not. Going to accommodate that, right? And what you're, what you're saying is there's overflow down the steam plant. Uh, what I'm saying is, it's already probably, uh. Probably, you know, if there's a lot of traffic coming in, which we don't know, because there's no, uh, traffic study. But if there's a lot of traffic coming in, there's already not enough spaces. And I think that the seating capacity in the venue, that's fine, like for everything else, but, you know, to say that. Um, it's not going to affect traffic, uh, you know, that might be, uh, not accurate. Uh, so that's, that's kind of what, uh, I just wanted to get that out there. Uh, I don't really have much, uh, uh, else to add on that point. Uh, and we can move on unless there's any other questions or comments for that. I, I do have one other thing I wanna ask.
So, just, just to be clear, so, uh, you're our only, uh, uh, attendee. Uh, so I just wanna make sure that we're concise, just talking about issues, uh, before we put this one to bed. Do you have anything to add? Cause how I heard this, there's no, not increased capacity. They've had parking there all along. They're taking fifty spaces, so people will have to drive a little bit farther to attend the event. But there's ample parking. People just have to walk a little farther. But that it is not impacting the trips from this project. So according to that. That would pass our, our town's, uh, standards, ordinance requirements. And town staff and the town engineer have reviewed that. Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I don't know that I have anything else to add. Um, right, I think you need to think about this is. As the question really is, is there an increase in trips as a result of this?
Right, and that's what I'm boiling this down to too. There's not an increase in trips.
Right.
People are gonna have to drive a little farther.
Well, I think, I answered this, I asked the same question, Payson, already. In very much the same way, and what answered it for you was, the university has sixty eight hundred parking spaces. So, uh, there's plenty of parking. They just have to walk.
Yeah.
The, it, it doesn't have, are those all commuter spaces?
No, no.
Okay, so, so, so how many, how, uh, how many, uh? Commuter spaces does it have available for hockey events? That's really, really what I'm getting at. Like, we can talk in general numbers, but. You know, if we're not looking at event specific data, then, um, then we're taking guesses.
But I wanna be clear, Payson. There is am- there's ample parking in the university. They're removing fifty spaces, requiring people to walk farther.
Correct.
We've, we've been provided information that town staff has reviewed this. I've listened to the applicant. Now it's up to the board to decide whether, whether that's sufficient information, but. Uh, based on what I've, I've heard, it, it does not appear that a traffic study would be warranted in this case.
Well, i- i- a. Is there, is there an exception in the code for that? Because, you know, that's basically, uh, is required for a major, um. Uh, major project. That's kind of, that was the initial, my initial, uh, inquiry.
There's, there's a minimum parking requirement for probably every project we have. Universities, we just said, has ample parking across campus. For this thing, for this project, we're talking about the traffic issue. And according to town review, town staff review, and what we've been presented. Uh, that, that there, the traffic will not increase.
Okay, so that didn't answer my question though, because required information is required. So is there an exception for not providing that information?
We talked about this earlier, that if this review criteria is not. Necessarily applicable in this case, because traffic will not be increased. Then there's no submission requirement. That's how it's, uh, written up in the review provided by town staff.
Okay, but the review is not the code. So, uh, I've made my point. We can move on. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. Uh. Yeah, if, if, if we're ready to move on.
We are ready.
Okay, uh, also in the application for the included materials, uh. Item eight, uh, on the list of, uh, of the initial list here. Uh, let's see here, a copy of the deed to the property option to purchase the property or other documentation to demonstrate the applicant's right. Title or interest to the property, uh, should be included, and, uh, the applicant is added in asterisk, and it says, see previous applications for uni- university deeds. Uh, I, I'm not, I'm not, you know, sure if that's standard, a standard option, but that's not one of the options here. It says, uh, you know, check either the W for, uh, provided in accompanying written information. Or check P for provided in plans. So, uh, you, you know, it doesn't say use an asterisk for, um. Uh, previous, uh, see previous applications. That might work for the town, and again, I'm just. Kind of putting this out there in the, uh, the record is the, is that, uh, if the information is not included with the application, it doesn't give. The public or butters, for instance, uh, chance to review that. So we don't know if there's any conflicts and it provides a, it's not. You know, providing, um, a, a full application in this case, so. Uh, just wanted to, to mention that. I understand that probably the town can go look that up, but again, for a butters in the public, we can't, uh, verify that information. Uh, i- i- as, as far as like the current state of application.
So I'm just thinking moving forward, uh. Maybe just for completeness, rather than an asterisk, then, then there are any issues here. I think maybe that would be a little bit more straightforward. Maybe just more information that applicants would provide for university projects.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think the, the feeling from staff was that, you know, we're, we're aware that the university owns this property. Simply you're asking for right title and interest when you, when, um, just to verify ownership. So ownership has, is. Verified in this case.
I, I, he's probably just trying to have procedural comment if this came up with other applications, but. For now, uh, I mean, there's an asterisk. See previous applications, just so that we don't have to deal with this question in the future. If there's some documentation in the application that the university owns the land where the university is, so that would be helpful.
Yes.
All right, anything else, Payson?
Uh, I think that's it. So I appreciate your time, uh, and, uh, thank you for answering my questions.
Very good, thanks. Mitch, anybody else?
Um, I'm not seeing.
No one else is online.
Good, uh, all right, time to close the public hearing. Questions from the board? I mean, interesting discussion on, on parking and traffic, but. Do others have questions on that? Did that make sense, our conversation of, we're talking about? People just have to walk farther, but yeah, does, does that make sense? I mean, how, yeah. But.
It makes sense.
Yep.
I'm good.
Do, I, I didn't, uh, believe that we needed a traffic study. Uh, the town staff, based on the review, I, I was comfortable with that. That makes sense to me. Uh, from what I know about it. Does anybody else think we need to go that direction?
The interesting thing about attending a football game or a hockey game at UMaine, if there's a larger tenant's expense expected. People strategically park around campus with their exit in mind, anyway.
Yeah.
So even if you had closer parking, they gotta park further away.
Yeah.
To, to have their easiest access out.
So just, just so we resolve this, is, is, is there any need, or does the board think there's any need for? The traffic study for more information for this point?
No, I do not.
On balance, nothing's really changed. Correct.
Right.
Right, people, might have to drive a little different direction, but overall the numbers are the same. Okay. Uh, any other remaining issues? Public hearing is closed. You seem like you wanna say something, is that?
No, I just, um. I did look to see if there was a park number of parking spaces listed on the, on the university's website that were commuter specifically. I couldn't remember if that information was available.
Yep.
A specific number is not, but I did pull up the parking map, and it is worth noting that. The largest lot on the university, the CCA lot, which can hold, I believe, a couple hundred vehicles.
Yep.
Is majority commuter. There is a small section at the early part that is blue label, which is faculty and graduate students and staff. But I also believe that, that that area is not generally policed for parking permits as much during event days. So, there, there is significant, from someone who has been a student there a number of times. There is significant commuter parking and additional parking that is usually provided for large scale events.
Okay, thank you, Jessica. Other issues? All right, um. So procedurally, again, so, uh, we talked about proposed findings of fact, and again. Record, you know, whoever can hear this. Any submissions packets, I just wanna reiterate that our town staff made a good suggestion. We're gonna try this for a bit. That the proposed findings of fact, based on staff review. Prior to our discussion here at the planning board, has been provided to us. Then we review, uh, the applications and we can add anything to those proposed findings of fact. So right now, I'm just thinking along, we, we've talked a little bit about the permit. And that'll affect their conditions, but just so that everybody is aware, just reminding them that. They've been prepared. I am not going to read those all into the record. We have a new process. So I, I get a break. I don't have to read pages and, and pages, but, uh, basically.
Found at the public folder too. They were provided to the public.
Correct, and just for the record, the, the application dates and some of the information you provided in there. And I noted some specifically that I thought was, was very nice and informative. Uh, for those reviewing, for instance, uh, talking about the public hearing. And where you have placed those ads, that was for public notice. I don't know if people noticed that, but. That was specifically called out in a review.
Bills.
Yeah, what's that?
Bills.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, there's just more information here. I think it was presented quite clearly, so that this is helpful. But as far as the findings of fact, those are in our packet. And specifically, do we now just rely on you? Where are we ready for the motion referring to these? And I just wanna be clear on how we're, we're moving forward here. Yes.
I had a quick question. Just clarifying in case anybody from the public is gonna ask about this. We do have an additional, um, condition for approval. Would that also be in the public folder, uh, after the meeting? We can do that.
Finalized.
To make sure they have access to that additional.
Yes, great, that really quickly. So once we get through the meeting, um, and she's added any additional conditions to the board ads. Um, I go into the folder tomorrow and I take the proposed findings of fact document. And I make a copy of it and I've changed the title, so it becomes a finalized findings of that. And that is turned into a PDF and put into the public folder along with the proposed findings of fact. So both versions of the document will be available to the public. Okay.
Occasionally, people, you know, there's been comments, oh, that's a done deal. Nothing is a done deal until we review and approve this. But the findings of fact are prepared by staff to help us. You know, that's based on their review, but it's provided to help us, you know, with our, our discussions, so. But nothing is a done deal. We have to discuss all these issues. And again, additional things are added to those, those findings or conditions are added. So now do we just rely on you? Cause I don't have to read, uh, how do you wanna proceed?
So I suggested a motion, talked about adding an additional condition number seven.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, I can read my suggested language for that, which would be prior to the issuance of a building permit. The applicant shall provide a copy of the approved slowed up permit to the town planner for the record of this project. Um, and you can read the suggested motion and you will need to note somewhere in there that you are adding. That condition number seven that I just read, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, and when we talked about this, the process last month. She mentioned providing these, uh, suggested motions, and I thought that was great. That's, uh, very clear. Uh, so we don't have to worry about wording. All we have to do is, well, unless we have significant issues, we just add. So thank you, that, I think that works well. Other people make that way, but, uh, developing motions is, should be simple, so. Very good. So are we ready for, that's our next step now, you know? So that the motion will address all the findings.
Yep.
Yeah. Who wants it? I'm ready for a motion. If there's no further discussion, then I didn't see any. Who wants it?
I moved to approve the site plan application of the University of Maine Authorized Agent WBRC dated November ninth, twenty twenty three. To complete approximately twenty six thousand square feet of renovations and nineteen thousand square feet of new additions. And enhanced exterior amenities on my four three acre. The University of Maine campus at the Alphon Arena and Sean Walsh Hockey Center. Physical address being Six Tonk Road on a portion of tax map eleven. Lot seventy seven and tax map eleven dash two, lot seventy seven, per the findings of fact dated December twentieth, twenty twenty three. And subject to the following conditions. Do I have to read all those?
Um, you can just say, subject to the conditions provided in the December twentieth findings of fact document. With the addition of number seven.
Okay, subject to the conditions, uh, found at the public, um, meeting on. Was it December twentieth?
Correct.
Okay, and, and in addition, there is a number seven.
Hey, that's nice, Joe.
Well, rest.
Yes, you're welcome. Very good, yeah, very good. We have a second further discussion on that? All right, all those in favor?
That's eight of, wow, sorry, eight approved and none of part.
Yep, thank you. No, we'll, we'll learn as we go with this, but that, that seemed to be fairly straightforward. I hope the people agree with it. All right, uh, next up. Uh, I'm gonna throw, uh, we didn't talk about this, but is there any discussion item? I usually like to see what we have on top.
So I talked at the last meeting at, um, seventy four Mill Street. So I talked at the last meeting that, um, seventy-four Mill Street, which is a private that you all had previously reviewed a contract zone on. Is pending review, or is currently under review by staff, um, I am anticipating. If they respond to our comments in time, that it will be on your January meeting. Um, and we also have, uh, another thing that you've seen before, it is a, um, the Forest Hollow subdivision. Uh, the last one.
Can't be many more.
It is the last one, it is the last one, so I understand that this is something, you know, seen a number of times in the past five or so years. They are coming for the planning board in January, deemed because of today, um, for the last one. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up, are we having our Christmas party as number, uh, four A? Uh, I guess we're at adjournment, I have a motion.
So.
Second.
I'll second it. Can we fight over that?
Discussion. Happy New Year, all those in favor?
That's eight for adjournment, not a part.